But the river itself was not about District One. It wasn't about Ed Reyes. It was about the region. It was about drought. It was about kids who need recreation.
Years of intense lobbying from then-councilmember Ed Reyes and friends may be paying off soon. The U.S. Army Corps of Engineers recently approved an ambitious plan to restore a stretch of the L.A. River, an 11-mile stretch between downtown and the Elysian Valley. Hollywood-area councilman Mitchell Farrell says removing concrete and restoring much of the river's natural beauty will have a ripple effect in improving neighborhoods along its path.
Bringing with it jobs, tourism, and a healthier environment for everyone.
A victory party of sorts for river advocates who've been fighting the fight for years on June 4th, L.A. River Day in the city of Los Angeles.
At the center of itself, the river is silence, and that's where I come in, with the sounds in my head and the words in my heart. Thank you very much.
At City Hall, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
It has been estimated that enhancing the 11-mile stretch of the river could kick-start as much as $5 billion in local investment. We now leave the topic of the L.A. River, but staying on the topic of water. It comes with a $100-million-dollar price tag, but L.A. just opened a new water treatment plant that changes how the city purifies its water. Anna Marcos takes a look.
L.A.'s water just got several degrees safer, healthier, and tastier. That's what L.A. DWP officials are saying as they open their new state-of-the-art water treatment plant in Silmar, the Dr. Ponkaj Parek Ultraviolet Disinfection Facility, named in honor of a man who worked for years at DWP to make L.A.'s water healthier.
This facility is dedicated to Dr. Ponkaj Parek, who passionately dedicated his life to fulfilling dreams of building safe water projects, curbing disease, and fighting illness in large and small villages across the world.
Ultraviolet treatment uses sunlight to disinfect the water, reducing the need for chemicals.
The key thing about going to ultraviolet disinfection is you get the disinfection of the water without adding chemicals such as chlorine, which can create carcinogens in the water. When we have the ultraviolet along with chloramines, you'll lose that chlorine smell and taste that you can have at times, and we're doing it at a price that is going to help our customer overall.
Inside this 12-foot diameter pipe is the water that is pumped out to us, the L.A. DWP ratepayers, 600 million gallons daily. According to officials, that's enough to fill the Rose Bowl eight times a day.
This project was delivered on time, and $13 million under budget.
This facility is just critical to our mission to ensure that Angelenos have a clean, reliable, cost-effective source of water for the ratepayers.
DWP officials say the water coming out of your tap is now so tasty, safe, and healthy, you might want to throw out your bottled water. That could be a matter of taste, but there is no arguing with the fact that L.A. now has the largest ultraviolet water treatment plant in the western U.S. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
L.A. DWP officials say state funding will cover $77 million of the $100 million cost of the project, but that ratepayers might see a small increase in their rates to pay for the remainder of the cost. And the city's efforts at self-improvement continue to its streets. The mayor is now on a quest to revitalize 15 of L.A.'s busiest thoroughfares with mini plazas, gathering places for cyclists and pedestrians to stop and hopefully shop. Here's Gil Reyes.
Here's how a stretch of Reseda Boulevard could look like permanently, a gathering place with green space, planters, even a bicycle corral to park your bike. The owner of Joyce's Coffee Shop, a community fixture since the 1960s, likes the idea.
It's good for the community.
And why is it good?
Because we bring most business to the neighborhood.
It's all part of Mayor Garcetti's Great Streets Initiative, a plan to refurbish pockets of some of L.A.'s busiest streets, including this one in Northridge. The initial plan calls for renovating one street from each of the city's 15 districts. The city has set aside $800,000 for improvements that will hopefully lure more cyclists and pedestrians to these areas. But before plans are finalized, community input is needed. That's why Mayor Garcetti has created the Great Street Studio, tasked with gathering opinions from businesses and neighborhood councils on what they want to see. Northridge-area councilman Mitchell Englander has already done much of the community outreach in his Northridge Vision Plan.
This is the look and feel we want for the community. We want more cycling, more pedestrian parkways, more outdoor features.
Mayor Garcetti also envisions more of these mini plazas extended at crosswalks for beautification and safety.
Some of our longest crosswalks are very difficult for our seniors to cross. By the time the timing, we've even seen some bad accidents. You can bump out a little bit, bump out a little bit, and make it a shorter distance to cross, and guess what? Then you can put some tables out there.
Just one of many considerations during the planning stages. In Northridge, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
A list of all 15 streets slated for improvements can be found at lamayor.org. Five years of the Gun Buyback Program in L.A. have resulted in thousands of guns taken off the street. City leaders believe that means fewer chances for shooting tragedies like the recent one in Isla Vista. Anna Marcos reports.
An undercover detective shows off one of the almost 1,000 guns that LAPD officers recovered in the city's latest Gun Buyback Program.
You can be pretty darn sure that collectively, these guns together, one of them would have resulted in a tragedy that we prevented.
We always get assault weapons. We always get guns that have been modified, sawed-off shotguns.
We've got bazookas.
We've gotten rocket lockers, bazookas.
In the last five years, the city has recovered close to 13,000 guns. Residents voluntarily hand in their weapons. In exchange, they get a Ralph's gift card. Assault weapons bring in as much as $200.
This is a particularly dangerous weapon in that
Yeah, sure.
...in that this is easily concealable, under a coat or under a jacket, and converts into an assault weapon.
City officials say L.A. saw more than 1,600 shootings in 2008. Five years later, in 2013, it was less than 1,000 shootings, and this year, officers predict that number will be even less. They credit the dropping crime rate to smarter police work, more citizen cooperation, and programs like the Gun Buyback Program.
The shooting in Isla Vista was a tragic reminder of the consequences of gun violence in our state, in our country.
L.A. at least will now destroy close to 1,000 guns, which could mean 1,000 fewer opportunities for another gun tragedy. I'm Anna Marcos for L.A. this week.
The city's economy depends on the success of not only big corporations, but also that of small businesses. And recently, the mayor's office took time to acknowledge the contributions of the city's countless entrepreneurs.
Hollywood may be the entertainment capital of the world, but the mayor wants all of Los Angeles to be known as the small-business capital of the world.
I know that small businesses are about dreams. They're about a vision that nobody else thinks will come true, but that you believe in. They're about taking that risk and taking on your own fate, the fear of falling, but also the incredible chance of flying. And for all of us to know that, to feel that, the impact today of small businesses has never been more important.
Among those honored for dreaming big was Diop Tran, who opened Good Girl Diner in Highland Park.
She says the food is American diner meets Vietnamese comfort food, and with a little help from her partners at the Women's Business Center, she recently celebrated her five-year milestone, which is amazing in the restaurant business.
And at the Small Business Week event held at City Hall honoring the city's entrepreneurs, Mayor Eric Garcetti acknowledged the city needs to make Los Angeles an even more hospitable place for small businesses.
I'm proud as councilmember, helped lead the fight to reduce our city's business tax, and now as mayor, it's something that I'm continuing to do because I know how tough that gross receipts tax is in the city of L.A., which taxes you whether you make money or not. It's a gross receipts tax.
The mayor says his hope is that the tax will be eliminated altogether in the not-so-distant future, and that with the help of small business owners who are the city's job generators, Los Angeles may just be able to put the recession in the rearview mirror.
The mayor also gave a pitch to the gathering of business owners to offer paid positions to the over 85,000 young people who have already signed up for the mayor's Summer of Success program in search of employment. If interested, go to hirelaugh.com. The first openly gay player in the NBA is among the honorees at a special ceremony at City Hall. Gil Reyes reports from LGBT Heritage Month celebrations.
A mariachi band helped kick off LGBT Heritage Month at City Hall. Among the honorees, a center for the NBA's Brooklyn Nets and Harvard-Westlake High School graduate Jason Collins. Collins is the first openly gay male athlete in major American sports.
I hope that my actions will make it easier for the next person to come out. I'm really looking forward to the future when it isn't a big deal, but we're not there yet.
By being out, proud, and secure in who you are, you have helped make it okay for other professional Major League athletes in the traditionally macho environment to be more accepting while paving the way for other LGBT athletes to come out.
The ceremony honored Rabbis Lisa Edwards and Denise Egger, and recognized activist Carlos Sosa for his work with homeless youth. City leaders thanked the honorees for their service and for helping to make the LGBT community increasingly accepted.
There literally is not enough time to thank everyone who helped build the movement.
I started being involved by not being involved. I saw some friends who were badly mistreated by their high school classmates.
It says to kids that your sexual orientation need never be a barrier to achievement.
And we welcome all who wish to be who they are.
For a list of LGBT heritage events throughout the month, log on to culturela.org. At City Hall, Gil Reyes for L.A. this week.
Another honoree was former L.A. City Clerk June Lagme. She's the founding co-chair of Asian Pacific Lesbian and Gays, said to be the first Asian-American LGBT organization. Los Angeles praised for being a leader in cutting power plant pollution. Pink the Pelican returns to nature after recovering from a brutal injury, and zoo admission goes up. These stories and more in City Beat.
The U.S. Environmental Protection Agency has announced it will significantly cut power plant pollution around the country, and says Los Angeles is already stepping up to meet the proposed standards. In response, the mayor called the limiting of carbon pollution from power plants a plus on multiple fronts.
This isn't just good for the environment. This isn't just good for our earth. It isn't just good for the resilience of our city. It's good for jobs. We've become the green jobs capital of the nation.
Mayor Eric Garcetti also gave credit to the Los Angeles Department of Water and Power for being a leader in moving off coal toward renewable energy sources. The Los Angeles City Council has approved raising the admission fee at the Los Angeles Zoo by $1 starting next month. The increase will put adult admissions at $19, and children 2 to 14 at $14. Senior rates, which apply to those 62 years and over, will go up to $16. While the impact of the increase on zoo goers was a concern...
The biggest impact on the public is how that zoo looks and feels and works. We want to make sure that when folks go to the Los Angeles Zoo, that it is a premier facility.
The city last raised zoo admission fees in 2013 also by $1. The latest increase was approved as part of the 2014-2015 city budget. Councilman Joe Buscaino joined International Bird Rescue, or IBR, earlier in the month at White Point Park in San Pedro to release Pink the Pelican. Some of these photos provided by IBR may be disturbing to viewers. Pink, an adult California brown pelican who made national headlines after being found with a near-severed throat pouch caused by an unknown assailant, has made a remarkable recovery at IBR's Los Angeles Center. Pink's mutilated pouch rendered it unable to feed, and he was extremely thin and unable to fly when Long Beach Animal Care Services found it nearly two months ago. Pink underwent two surgeries to repair his pouch. The kids are having a blast climbing the jungle gym at the new Devonshire Arlita Park. The two-acre site is the 22nd park to open as part of the Department of Recreation and Parks's 50 Parks Initiative, a plan to get more green space in L.A.'s urban areas. Some of the features: separate play areas for younger and older kids, and ADA-accessible areas.
This place was empty, nothing. It was dirt, like a desert. It was bad. Yeah, right now it's nice.
The park also boasts smart irrigation and other energy-efficient features.
Jump in. The city's pools have opened for the summer swim season, and one of the city's most popular pool facilities may give local beaches a run for their money.
On what was one of the cooler days before the start of summer, the city's Department of Recreation and Parks kicked off the start of its summer swim season at Hanson Dam Aquatic Center in Lakeview Terrace.
Youth, 17 and younger, get in free. Adults are charged $2.50. Everybody is welcome. You have to have proper swim attire to come, and we ask that those that are under the age of seven, for every child, they must be accompanied by an adult.
While the crowds were missing on this opening day due to the mild weather, reckon parks officials expect a robust swim season as usual this summer, especially here at the unique 1.5-acre swim lake, complete with the water slide and beach cabanas.
Instead of the community having to drive all the way to the beach, we brought the beach to them. This pool, it's called a zero-depth entry pool, so as you walk on the walkway, you gradually get in deeper.
The deepest part of the swim lake is 3 and 1/2 feet, but despite the relatively safe depth of this pool, lifeguards will be on duty during swim hours. Ariana Powers is hoping to pass the requirements to become a junior lifeguard.
You have to swim 100 yards under 2 minutes. It was nice. The water is nice.
For now, the Hanson Dam Aquatic Center is just open for swimming on the weekends, but will open seven days a week, starting Sunday, June 15th, through the summer.
The city's Department of Recreation and Parks operates a total of 61 swimming pools. For more information, go to laparks.org. In this week's List of Things to Do, color photos from an interment camp, learning all about Indian and Pakistani cuisine, and the Brazilian Summer Festival.
Currently on exhibit now through August 31st at the Japanese-American National Museum is Colors of Confinement, rare Kodachrome photographs of Japanese-American incarceration in World War II. Colors of Confinement presents 18 rare Kodachrome photographs taken by Bill Mondo during his incarceration at the Hart Mountain Interment Camp in Wyoming in 1943 and 1944. While others were shooting in black and white, Mambo was ahead of his time, shooting in Kodachrome, a technology then in its infancy. The images are a paradox, vibrant, gorgeous photographs of a bleak historical episode. The Japanese-American National Museum is located at 100 North Central Avenue in Little Tokyo. Go to j a n m dot org for details. On Saturday, June 14th, the Culinary Historians of Southern California will present India and Pakistan, Divided by Borders, United by Taste, at the Mark Taper Auditorium of the Downtown Central Library located at 630 West Fifth Street. Prem Kishore of India and Farhana Sahibzada of Pakistan will team up at the June 14th talk for a conversation on the cuisines of the two adjoining countries and some of the historical events that shaped those cuisines. The talk starts at 10:30 a.m. A reception with themed refreshments will follow the talk at around 11:30. Call 323-663-5407 for more details. And on this Father's Day, Sunday, June 15th, why not celebrate the fathers in your life by attending the 21st Annual Brazilian Summer Festival at the Ford Amphitheater at 2580 Cahuenga Boulevard East in Hollywood, starting at 5 p.m. The special event celebrates the opening weekend of the 2014 FIFA World Cup, taking place in Brazil from June 12th through July 15th. The festival will feature live bands, DJs spinning Brazilian dance hits, and soccer-themed entertainment, dancing, and costumes. More info can be found at fordampitheater.org. And that's a look at some upcoming things to do.
And in this week in tweets, we have a few highlights from this week's Twitter, Instagram, or Facebook posts from city leaders. Here's a photo posted on Mayor Garcetti's personal Instagram account of him with NBA player Jason Collins, who was honored by the city during its LGBT Heritage Month celebrations. And if something looks amiss, it's because the mayor got up on a chair in order to tower over Collins. The mayor even lamented his height with the funny hashtag, "Six feet ain't what it used to be." Meanwhile, Councilman Joe Buscaino posted to Twitter and Facebook this photo of him helping to release Pink the Pelican back to the wild. And with this being graduation season, Councilman Mitchell Farrell posted this fun selfie from the Hollywood Bowl, where he gave the keynote speech to the 2014 graduating class of Hollywood High School. And that's going to do it for this edition. Thanks for joining us. I'm Ellen Chang. A reminder that you could catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. this week.
For years, we've asked so much of so few.
Now we have a chance to serve these heroes.
To give time, offer comfort, or lend a hand.
To ease the burden on a military family.
Let's honor their service by volunteering ours.
Troy McCavon from North Hollywood. You're watching L.A. City View, Channel 35. Our city, our channel. Our city, our channel.
It's June 11th, Wednesday. I'd like to welcome you to your Los Angeles City Council. Again, it's Wednesday, June 11th. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m. Mr. Clerk, I believe we have a quorum. Could you please call the roll?
Blumenfeld, Bonn, Busquets, Grino, Englander, Fuentes, Weiser, Carras, Kerkorian, Labange, Martinez, O'Farrell, Parks, Price, Wesson. Eleven members present in a quorum. Mr. President?
First order of business?
Approval of the minutes.
Labange moves. Martinez seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Price moves. O'Farrell seconds. That brings us where on the agenda?
Mr. President, we have requests to receive and file Item 1I inasmuch as the lien has been paid in full, and to continue Item 1K to June 27.
So without objection, that'll be the order?
Very good, sir. Mr. President, Items 1 through 8 are items noticed for public hearing.
Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. Cards on 1 and 8.
Okay. Could somebody grab cards for Mr. Herman Sargent? Okay, let's hold those items. Members, specials. Let's prepare to vote on the other items. We're not there yet. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, what's next?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 9 through 24. They're items for which public hearings have been held. Items 15, 16, and 17 should be held on the desk until such time as the committee reports are in and circulated.
Okay, then that's fine. That handles, Mr. Price, your concern. A member, Mr. Parks?
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four. Anyway, we've held 16. Cards? Or we don't need cards on this one? Okay, they were all satisfied in committee. Members, specials. Okay, let's prepare to vote on the remaining items. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate.
Twelve ayes.
Hold on one second. Mr. Busquets?
Yes, I just, the spread, if I can, acknowledge two area planning commissioners that we just approved. Area Planning Commissioner Lane and Area Planning Commissioners Sepeda Hatch. I want to acknowledge them. If we can get a shot from Channel 35 here in the front. They're joined by their loved ones.
Wave. There she is. Yeah, there they are.
Thank you very much for your service and commitment to serving the Harbor area on our area planning commission. I want to thank Plum as well for the nomination, and Mayor Garcetti for putting forth two fine candidates. Thank you. Look forward to serving with you.
Now wave again, since you're on. Yeah, there they are. Congratulations, and thank you for your willingness to serve your city. Mr. Labange?
I want to follow the lead. I think, have we got to that number yet there, Mr. President? On number 14? We have a commissioner for the South Valley, Rebecca Beatty. Rebecca, stand up. Thank you so much.
Okay, Rebecca, let's go back. Give Rebecca a round of applause. Congratulations.
Mark, please, Mark Durkic, stand up. Wave to everybody.
There's Mark on the end.
Thank you for your service. Thank you. On behalf of Mr. Kerkorian and all of us in the South Valley.
All right. Where are we now, Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 25 through 29. They're items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, so without objection, those items are now before us. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir. We have cards on 25, 28, and 29.
Okay, let's hold those items and vote on the remaining items. Specials, members. I don't see any, so let's, Mr. Parks?
I'd like to have 20, what is it, 29? Hold on one.
Didn't we already hold 29? Mr. Parks, I think we've already got.
I'm sorry, 28.
And 28 was held for cards, so you're good. So let's vote on what we have left. Let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Good. So that we move along. Mr. Clerk?
Mr. President, that brings us to Items 30 through 35. They're items scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold them on the desk?
What I'd like to do is defer to Mr. Kerkorian and take your recommendation, sir.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. Item number 30 is a standard trip-and-fall settlement, which can be approved in open session. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the recommendation. Item number 33 is a traffic collision settlement. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the recommendation. Those matters can be disposed of in open session. Item 35, we had in closed session previously, and we continued. And I believe, Mr. Englander, did you have some questions about this? Or have they been resolved? They've been resolved? So we had heard that previously in closed session, and that can be resolved also in open session. Budget and Finance recommends approval of the city attorney's recommendations. So that would leave then 31, 32, and 34 for a closed-session discussion.
Okay. So, Mr. Clerk, why don't you read the items that we will currently be taking up?
Very good, sir. Item 30, in the case entitled "Margarita Flores versus City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend $150,000 in settlement. Item 33, in the case entitled "Lazarus Whitlock et al. versus City of Los Angeles", there is a recommendation to expend $57,000 in settlement. And for item 35, in the case entitled "Ronald Boone"?
Mr. President?
Yes.
Item 35, I think that there may have been other questions that other members might have had, so we'll go ahead and hold that one in closed session as well.
Okay, so let's just vote on the two that are before us. Mr. Clerk?
Yes, sir. Those would be Items 30 and 33, sir.
All right. So let's open the roll. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
All right, they are approved. So that brings us to presentations, or?
Mr. President, on the continuation agenda, Item 36 is an item for which a public hearing has been held. I am told that an amending motion is forthcoming.
So why don't we just hold that?
Very good, sir.
And then we'll go back to presentations. How's that? And so we have a joint presentation, is my understanding, with Mr. Labange and Mr. O'Farrell? If you two would take the center podium?
Mr. President, thank you. Today, along with Councilmember Mitchell O'Farrell, we honor the Independent Shakespeare Company of Los Angeles. Mr. President, they first started out in South Manhattan there in 1999, but they got smart and they came west. They came west to Los Angeles and working with our Cultural Affairs Department, created some activity up on Barnesdale. But the popularity grew beyond the limits of Barnesdale Art Park. And they bumped into somebody, I bumped into them, and I said, "Go to the Old Zoo." And the Old Zoo, located in Park Central in Griffith Park, still remains its 1966, you know, activity that was in there, except the animals. So in came these great actors, who are better than it. I don't want to say that'll lose the animal vote, better than animals. But they have created such an activity that 45,000 people come to see free Shakespeare during the summer months. In a partnership with the City of Los Angeles, the Cultural Affairs Department, and Recreation of Parks, it's the place to be. And I'm very proud because we had a little part in it. And I am very proud, as you are, whether it's Hanson Dam or Exposition Park, Mr. Price, you have, Mr. Fuentes at Hanson Dam, at San Pedro, Mr. Busquets, wherever it is, Sepulveda Basin, Ms. Martinez, when you go and you see activity, and there's all the people that you don't see all the time, but the real people of Los Angeles enjoying something that's special and it's free. And that's what these people are all about. I'm going to ask my colleague, Mr. O'Farrell, to say a few words before I call on two very famous spatial people from the Independent Shakespeare Theater. Mr. O'Farrell?
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Thank you. Mr. President and colleagues, just, I just got to say, you know, I did a little bit of theater in my day and was a member of a couple of theater groups back in the day. And I got to say that when you can carry a Shakespeare play, that is the elite level of acting, but it's not an elitist performance. So I think all of these actors standing with us deserve a huge round of applause because they are the creme de la creme. In 2003, the Independent Shakespeare Company partnered with the Department of Cultural Affairs and Recreation of Parks to create their free Shakespeare program at Barnesdale Park in the Great 13th District. And a little footnote here is that back when we renovated Barnesdale Park, one of my projects was the Great Lawn. And I had in mind the Shakespeare Company so that we could design the improvements at the lawn to accommodate the Shakespeare Festival. Just a little footnote. And now that they're at Griffith Park, they're really prospering and finding a wider audience, which they so richly deserve. I think, it's a bigger lawn. There you go. I think Shakespeare is a world-class tradition, and it belongs in a permanent space in a world-class city. The inaugural Free Shakespeare in Griffith Park Festival drew over 13,000 people that year, and it's only continued to grow over the years with 43,000 attendees for this past 2013 season. As they get set to kick off their 2014 concert season later this month, I'd like to thank the Independent Shakespeare Company for keeping the resilient works of William Shakespeare alive in our community, in our schools, and for our future generations. Therefore, I am proud to stand here with Councilmember Labange, all of these wonderful actors, as we honor the Independent Shakespeare Company for continuing to offer our Los Angeles communities with a chance to see incredible theatrical works and make them available to everyone in Los Angeles, no matter who you are or where you're from. That's what it's all about with the arts. So congratulations, and I'm just happy to be here with you. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. O'Farrell?
Yes, sir.
This is a wonder. Say it again?
If you talk of a wonder.
This is a wonder if you talk of a wonder, and you talk of a wonder, Mr. O'Farrell. And you said you were an actor, too. I was an actor, too. I was Hans and Hansel and Gretel there on Riverside Drive. So I have a little it in me. But David Melville is the managing director, who's so special. His assistant director is our very own Melissa, I want to say it correctly.
Charlesma.
Charlesma. Give her a big hand. And Mr. Moreno's going to speak in a moment. But let's hear it from the managing director. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thank you. We're celebrating 10 years of Shakespeare Festival in Los Angeles, and it's been an extraordinary 10 years. It was wonderful to start in Barnesdale Park in the Great 13th District and to watch the festival grow. We had so much support from that council district when we were doing that. And it's wonderful now to be in Griffith Park and have the support of the great Fourth Council District and Tom Labange. And as we look to the future, we hope to serve many more people in Griffith Park every summer. Please, I invite you to come along. We'll give you free tickets. It's a wonderful event. You can bring your family, bring as many people as you want. People stretch out on the lawn with blankets and picnics. And enjoy the wonderful works of William Shakespeare, which brings so many people together from all walks of life. And as we look to the future, we're so excited to be engaged in this project, to build a permanent stage in Griffith Park, which will allow us to present bigger and better productions with great lighting and bathrooms, which have toilet seats. And I'd like to introduce Javi Moreno, who's one of our actors.
Javi, good job. Javi, good job.
Hello? Hello? On behalf of Independent Shakespeare Company, we want to say thank you. This means so much to us. We thank the great city of Los Angeles, the L.A. City Council, and especially our stronger city champion, Tom Labange. In Los Angeles, every summer, along with Triple DJ at Heat, Carnasadas, the House of Coyote, traffic to Yacil Puig home runs, something special happens. The Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival. For the past 10 years, Independent Shakespeare Company has produced free performances in Los Angeles city parks. Our audience has grown from our first performance of 15 people and a dog, who left in intermission, to a total of 43,000 last summer. This year, we expect to present free Shakespeare to over 50,000 audience members. Some who will see Shakespeare and/or play for the first time, to those that see them more than once, year after year. They come up the hill to the Old Zoo with baby strollers and picnic baskets filled with pizza, tortas, sushi, to even our city classic like Philippe's French Dip. They sit on everything from flattened cardboard to cheek-teak lawn chairs. They represent every corner of our city, from San Pedro to Silmar, Venice to Boyle Heights. They, like us, are Los Angeles. My name is Javi Moreno. I'm a proud native Angelino, born and raised in the beautiful historic Barrio of Boyle Heights. From the front porch of my home, I grew up admiring the Hollywood sign in the distance. My urge to perform was supported by my parents, who were family entertainers, the center of attention and class clowns. But growing up in my neighborhood, just as onstage, when the lights rise, sometimes so did the gunfights. From losing friends to gang violence, to being shot at 19-years-old, I fell hostage to the path that could have led me behind bars or in a grave. But I jumped onstage. Theater changed my life. Theater saved my life. With Independent Shakespeare Company, them, my mentors, castmates, friends, neighbors, my real family, I've gone from an audience member to an actor onstage. This festival is Los Angeles. It's me, it's you, it's every neighborhood, it's of every color and race. It's multilingual and multi-generational. We are a diverse theater company for all of L.A. We do it for L.A. because we are L.A. We thank you for this recognition today and hope to see you, your constituents, and family for Twelfth Night and the Taming of the Shrew at the Griffith Park Free Shakespeare Festival, this and every summer at the Old Zoo. Thank you.
And, Mr. President?
Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange? With all of your training being Hans, maybe in "Taming of the Shrew", they could find a role for Mr. Labange. And I promise you, you will get an entire new audience. City Hall will come to see Mr. Labange in "Taming of the Shrew."
Well, thank you, Mr. President. That's awfully kind. I may have some time in the months ahead that I could do that. But I want to say, on behalf of Bill and all the members of the Shakespeare Company, I'm so proud, I'm so proud of Mr. O'Farrell and all the hard work he did for Mr. Garcetti. They got him here. I'm so proud of the Recreation of Parks Department and the transformation of the Old Zoo. And I don't know many of us, maybe Mr. Parks, do you remember the Old Zoo, Mr. Parks? Yeah, he remembers the Old Zoo. I got him. I got him to say a positive thing. He didn't got that. Good job, Mr. Parks. I think it's so important that we remember our history and use it and transform it. And they have, they're going to have special nights where each council district will be honored to bring their staff, and we'll give them the front row on the left for the council district six and 12 and 15 and 11 and all the way down through seven and two. And how about you? Who said that? William Shakespeare. Thank you, everybody. Hold it up right there. Hold it up, everybody. Hold it up, hold it up. I want to be next to them. Boom, boom, boom.
Let's move to item eight called Special by Mr. Walsh. Wait a minute, I have another card. And Mr. Akala on item eight. Please come forward.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org, or go to J. Walsh Confidential and tweeting at Hollywood Dems. This is number eight on the agenda. This concerns sewers. Now, again, when we had that big rainstorm, the sewer backed up right 100 feet from here. The sewers backed up. The sewers have not been tested because we're in global warming period. But when we start getting El Nino, and that's what we predicted, the sewers in this city are just like the potholes in the city. You're ignoring them. And this number eight concerns property. This is one sewer in the whole city. Let me tell you right now, you need tens of millions of dollars to redo the sewers. And I have photos on my website of the sewer backing up, HollywoodHighlands.org.
Mr. Akala.
I wish to speak only one minute. I was at the gay parade and the whole place smelled like a sewer.
Speak on the item. Speak on the item.
I'm talking about the sewers in West Hollywood, sir. Is that part of your city or not? Oh, sorry.
It is not. But I wasn't going to say that.
Anyway, when I go around the city here.
Wouldn't want to embarrass you.
It all smells like a sewer. You do need to take care of the sewers. The whole city smells like a sewer, especially right across City Hall and right near Philippe's. The whole place smells like a sewer. That means you're not taking care of the sewers. Mr. Walsh was right. You're not taking care of anything. You're only putting money in your pockets. One minute only. Hold my time. Seven seconds to go. Five, four, three, two, one. One minute.
All right, let's prepare to vote on this item. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Mr. Akala, stay there. I'm going to jump to item 17. You put out a card on it.
Communication from the city clerk, an ordinance of intention first consideration relative to the proposed North Hollywood Transit property basement. Oh, yeah, the transportation system to North Hollywood is lousy. You're lucky to get a bus every hour. You need to improve that, like you need to improve a lot of other things, but we don't know where the money goes. I wish to speak only one minute, and I got 23 seconds left, so.
Stay on the item.
Yes, I am going to do a gay reminder. What do you call it? Filibuster.
Stay on your item.
Okay, in the filibuster, you're.
No, you're not on the item. Thank you, Mr. Akala. All right, let's prepare to vote on this item.
Mr. President, if I may, the Economic Development Committee report has been circulated for this item, and it's now before council.
Okay, so let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Fourth with. Now, we want to move to 25. Mr. Walsh. Herman Akala on item 25.
John Walsh, blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. This concerns street lighting. You know, you don't enjoy it, you actually do enjoy it, but you've done a very good job in street lighting. The lights, anybody who has a light on their corner and the light goes out, it is scary. It is incredibly dark. Parts of the city, particularly in South Central, they don't have lighting. You never got lighting. Where the white people live and where I live, we got great lighting, okay? That's racism. HollywoodHighlands.org. And as far as this one is concerned, they're doing a good job, and I hope you do a good job, on Stoner Avenue, when the lights went out two weeks ago, the next day, the lights were in, so that when I walked down the street, everyone could see my snitches get stitches.
No, that's not on the item. Thank you, Mr. Walsh. Thank you very much. Mr. Akala. Mr. Herman, you're next.
I wish to speak only one minute. I go all over the city and Mr. Welch is right. In the lower neighborhoods, there's hardly any lighting. In fact, I was just given a place in Inglewood, and I don't know why they gave me that place. All my neighbors are of a different color than I am, but that's okay, as long as I feel safe there. I mean, but the streets are dark, and sometimes you can't even see some of the people that live there. They come out of the bushes. So I don't feel that safe over there, but that's what Section 8 is giving people. They send you way to the ghetto. One minute only, okay? Don't keep sending us to the ghetto. We need better.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Mr. Herman. Mr. Herman passes. Let's prepare to vote. Let us open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. 15, item 15. Mr. LeBonge, Buscayino, item 15. It's my understanding the report has been circulated.
Yes, and Mr. President, we have a great new nominee soon to be the executive director of the Port of Los Angeles. If you sit at the table, the nominee as well, and I'm going to pitch it right over to Joe Buscayino. He, along with Mike Bonin and I, had a great discussion with Mr. Soroka this morning. I think you'll be truly impressed with this great new port director. Mr. Buscayino.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, earlier this year, the Port of Los Angeles led the direction of the port commissioners, who we have before us, Ambassador Martinez, Commissioner Arien, Commissioner Castellanos. The port commissioners directed Ralph Anderson and Associates to conduct an executive search to recruit the most qualified candidate to fill the position of executive director. Colleagues, who you have before you is the most qualified candidate to lead the Port of Los Angeles into the direction of ensuring that we remain the number-one port in the country. We had a great dialogue in committee earlier this morning. I'll ask a few questions that we heard in committee just to share with the rest of our colleagues here. Who you have here is Gene Soroka, who is the most business-minded individual in the shipping industry today. And the Port of Los Angeles has made significant strides in reducing emissions under the direction of Port Director Dr. Geraldine Nance. Now, if you look at the reductions in NOCs and SOCs in the Cleaner Action Plan, cleaner water coming through in and out of our port, incredible strides on a voluntary basis. Who you have now at the Port of Los Angeles, soon to be confirmed with today's confirmation, is someone who's business-minded, who will continue to drive the industry in and out of our port. Mr. Soroka, thank you so much for your time. And what I asked you in committee earlier is the important fact that we need to be number-one port in the country when it comes to competition. Seems like we're competing more with our neighbors in Long Beach. How will you bring your experience in the shipping industry? How has that experience in the shipping industry prepared yourself to address the competitive edge at the Port of Los Angeles and other ports across the country?
Competition is everywhere, Councilman. And one of our core tenets as we begin to formulate our business plan is just that, to make sure we stay ahead of everybody who is looking over our shoulder. The work that's being done in the Panama Canal for expansion, the Suez Canal's growth in more than double-digit fashion thus far, year over year, as well as other ports who are emerging to take a bigger piece of the pie, are all within our eyesight. The Port of Los Angeles has a reputation for having great foresight and leadership in the area of making sure we understand the economic trends and the business trends that are taking place. To stay ahead of that game as well will differentiate us from the competition and make sure that we show that best-in-class customer service so people will want to come and work with the Port of Los Angeles.
Give us a snippet on your experience in working with APL. How has that experience led you to where you're at today?
I worked for APL for more than 25 years. About half of that time of my career was spent overseas in Asia and the Middle East. Having responsibility for commercial, operational port terminal facilities, as well as intermodal rail and land transportation companies, I think builds a strong portfolio by which I can add value to the port. Moreover, my contacts within the industry and the knowledge that they can bring to share with us on how to build a bigger and better port, I think will be of great benefit.
And in committee, we also talked about the environment. And as I indicated earlier, the reductions of emissions on a voluntary basis, the port has been credited for. It's important, born and raised in the harbor area myself, seeing the cranes soar over the Port of Los Angeles, family and friends of mine who suffer from asthma, it's important to grow the port, grow it green. What are your thoughts on and continue to improve the environment at the Port of Los Angeles?
I think it's of paramount importance, Councilman. The work that's been done to date and the plan that has been charted has been exemplary, but there is more work to do. Alternative marine power is taking hold and having gained traction in overseas locations that are now coming to the port to ask for those release of best-practice ideas. In addition, the Clear Air Action Plan has some milestones that we need to reach by next decade that are even greater than what we have done so far today. Zero emissions policies and opportunities also present challenges going down line, so we must continue to go upward and onward in the area of sustainability and our environmental causes.
And Mr. Bonin pointed this out, the importance of addressing the automation. You've seen ports around the world. How do we differ when it comes to automation to other ports across the country and around the world?
Some port locations around the world have made great strides in the area of automation and technology. There has been good work here in Southern California and specifically at the Port of Los Angeles. There is agreement between labor and employers on how to deploy that technology, but the stakeholders must all be together at the table in order to work implementation processes that make sure it's in the best interest of the port, the employers, and the business growth for jobs here in Los Angeles.
And lastly, as I mentioned, and I continue to mention here in the horseshoe as well as in committee, we are the last standing port that's not an attraction in this country. It's important for us to be the number-one port container, container port in the country, but we also need to focus on tourism. And we lack that on both sides, both the Wilmington and San Pedro waterfronts. I also mentioned that the port does an incredible job in moving cargo, but lacks the experience on retail commercial opportunities with economic development opportunities along our waterfronts. Give us your thoughts on, and of course, in 2012, November 2012, the port identified the L.A. Waterfront Alliance as a developer, the 30-acre ports of call redevelopment efforts. The process, the progress has moved slowly. I understand the ongoing negotiations and the E&amp;A process right now, but we need to continue to push to ensure that the port is the number-one tourist attraction here in our region. I also mentioned to you in committee that the port does not identify one single person to focus on retail commercial development. Give me your thoughts on that. Are you open to at least identifying a director that will focus on retail commercial opportunities on the Wilmington and San Pedro waterfronts?
Those are all very good questions, Councilman. Thank you. Following my hopeful confirmation, our first order of business is to sit with the harbor commissioners to chart out our business plan, tactics, organizational design, and our priorities, making sure we have a full understanding of what is necessary to move forward. The work that's done through the cargo development at the port helps do other things in and around the harbor area. I want to listen and learn more in these areas to see what can be done. The jobs creation, the movement forward of a diversified port to enhance revenue streams and grow the profitability of the organization are all of top, top priorities to me. But I'd like a little bit of time to learn and to take the good counsel of the commission on how we drive forward, but all are important.
Thank you, Mr. Soroka. And again, let me remind you and the commissioners that my priority is ensuring that we move forward on waterfront redevelopment in the Wilmington and San Pedro sides. I look forward to serving with you. And colleagues, I ask your eye vote in this confirmation before you. I look forward to working with you, Mr. Soroka. Thank you, Gene.
Thank you. Same here.
Okay, no speakers on the queue. Let's, Madam Clerk, open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
Fourth with. Thank you, Mr. LeBonge. Mr. Clerk, why don't we go into, do we have a special meeting?
No, sir. Item 36 was on the continuation agenda, sir.
Okay, so let's go to item 36.
And pardon me, sir. Excuse me, motion 36A has been submitted and circulated for council's consideration.
Okay, so on this item, let us open the roll. There are no cards. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
Let's go to item 28. I have Mr. Walsh, Herman, and Akala. So on item 28, we do have, it was called Special due to public comment cards, and like I said, Walsh, Herman, Akala. Please come forward. Mr. Walsh.
John Walsh, again, I challenge you. You have only, this is a reward for $50,000 in a gang killing. And as I have said, and I bought this on Hollywood Boulevard for $15. This is a threat. People wear these all over the city. Snitches get stitches. I just want anybody to know, and everybody out here in South and East know, that if anybody gets up and gives any information on this killing, they will be slashed. You see the blood on the shirt? They will be slashed. We live in a city, and I say this to tourists, the mayor doesn't run the city. The gangs, organized crime, disorganized crime runs the city. And I'm telling you, Rashawn Davis, and again, I have said over and over again, you can destroy my credibility right here in front of the cameras. I have said that only one reward has been paid out in seven years. If I'm wrong, give me the other rewards that have been paid out. In fact, it's sickening. I'm glad the relatives didn't show up. You torture the relatives by coming here and giving them false hope, the way you gave Judge Pregerson's grandson false hope. Then you arrested somebody named Wong and claimed that he had run over Judge Pregerson's grandson. And what happened? That was months ago. What happened? We have no idea. You haven't, you just found somebody and tried to pin it on them. I'm telling you, in this city, if you want to commit the perfect crime, murder an African-American or a Hispanic in their neighborhoods, you will not be arrested or convicted because...
Thank you. Thank you. Your time is up. So, Mr. Herman, are you next? Come right ahead.
Note from an educator, however, we're talking on item 28 regarding parks in Martinez, an offer or reward for information leading to identification, apprehension, and conviction of persons responsible for the death of Mr. or Ms. Davis on January 29. the death of Ms. or Ms. Davis on January 29, 2014. How many times do we hear of these crises? And when does it end? You are as much guilty as the perpetrators who commit these crimes. Judge Pergerson is a good example. An elected public official's child killed due to the reason of your negligence to comprehend the law. I'm going to keep this down to one minute. And Ms. Ramirez has always been right about the hoodlums, the thugs, and your organization of white crime.
On the item.
Well, I'll keep it to one minute. Keep your 10 seconds for all I care.
Mr. Akala.
I just want to speak one minute. I think what they said is right. Your reward system is failing. You're not really stopping crimes from happening just because you tell people, "We'll give you some money if you tell us." And sometimes even when they tell you, they don't even get the money. That's happened before in the case of that guy that was shooting LAPD a while back, one of their own. So people didn't even get a reward because they said, you know, big deal. Anyway, yeah, snitches get stitches. One minute. One minute.
Thank, thank you very much. Mr. Parks?
Thank you very much. I'd ask the council to approve this reward motion that's requested by both the police and the family. It occurred on January 29, 2014, at 2:45 PM. Rashawn Davis was stabbed while he was standing near a bus stop on the northwest corner of La Brea and Coliseum in Los Angeles. Upon being stabbed, Mr. Davis ran away from his attackers towards an apartment he shared with his wife and four children. As he reached the back of the gate of the apartment, Mr. Davis collapsed and was transported by the fire department to the hospital where he succumbed to his injuries. The LAPD has exhausted all leads, asking for the community's help in resolving this case. We ask for an $50,000 reward.
Thank you, Mr. Parks. Let's open the roll. Close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Okay, Mr. Clerk, you had a, I guess, we want to continue, is it 1J? I don't remember.
Yes, sir. 1J. There's been a request to continue that to July 29.
Okay, so without objection, that'll be the order. If we could now, if we could go to item 16? Mr. Price, you wanted to make a...
I do, Mr. President. This, we're approving the Greater Limerick Park Village Crenshaw Corridor Business Improvement District Plan. The management district plan should be modified to indicate six-month assessment for the first year, which is 2014.
Okay, so...
There's your eye vote.
Let's prepare to vote on item 16. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Thank you. Let's move to 29.
Mr. President, pardon me. There's been a request to send items 16, 17, 19, 20, excuse me, 30, and 33 forthwith, sir.
I have no objection to that. So they're sent forthwith. Go to 29, Mr. Walsh and Mr. Herman.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. If I'm murdered, you know who's responsible.
No, let's stay on the item.
I am the item. Number 29. This concerns street service repairs and recycled asphalt materials. I hope you saw on Channel 2 last night their story about potholes, which aren't potholes, they're just cracks. The reason, and you list them as potholes and take a bow for them. It was a big investigative story on Channel 2. The point here is that our streets, we have tens of thousands of potholes, we have hundreds of thousands of cracks, we have the worst streets in America. And I want you now for the camera, when I sit down to say, "No, we don't have the worst-conditioned street in America." For shame, City Council, highest-paid in America and the worst streets.
Okay, Mr. Herman, I believe. Yes?
It's true. We have the worst streets in the world. We are the capital for potholes, thanks to Jose Wezar and other members of this council.
Now, direct your questions to me.
So the direction here, Mr. Herb, and to you, Mr. Inglander, is this: Are you following the guidelines and the regulations to abuse or fraud the system from federal and state fundings to appropriately conduct business for our streets to make them safe for us? Because you're using federal dollars in the wrong, unmanageable way. And yet, Mr. Fuentes, Fuentes walks away because he knows it's true.
Stay on your subject matter.
I am on subject. Mr. Price and Mr. Busciano and Mr. Inglander. So the whole point is this: Keep in correction the problems that you have not addressed in the last 35 years, because I've been on this earth 35 years and you haven't fixed a darn pothole since. Thank you. One minute.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Fourteen ayes.
Mr. Labange. We'll be moving to item 1.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to continue item 1D to June 27.
Mr. Clerk, change in order. Thank you so much. Without objection, certainly. All right, on, can we do 1B? I have some cards here, Mr. Clerk. 1B. Mr. Badanian, 1B. No address. Please come forward. And as she comes forward, Mr. our Building and Safety Representative, please tell us what council district 1B is in.
13, yeah, 13.
In the 13th district?
Yeah, City 13, yes.
Thank you. Proceed. Thank you.
Hi, I was trying to speak to Councilman O'Farrell. We would like to today take care of this matter and either negotiate or see what we can do. We want to seize and de-seize this illegal lien that we have against our property. First of all, for the past 10 years, we pay for a service, but we never get serviced. All we do is pay every year to the Building and Safety a fee of over close to $400, but we never get any inspectors out to come to check us out and see what we're doing and see how we're doing. For the past 10 years, I've only seen an inspector about two times, and we pay the fee for about 10 years. So I don't know where this money goes and whose money, whose pocket this money goes, but we never see any inspectors, and we are paying for a service that we're not getting serviced for. About two years ago, we did see an inspector for one time. He came out and he told us to fix some problems, and he said he'll be back in a month, and they never showed up. It's been six, seven months, so I don't know what's going on. On the other hand, in 2013, we came to the City Council to resolve this matter. They said they will send us a letter. They never did. And here we go. We see a lien paper just posted on our wall, and no certified mail, nothing. We want to take care of this matter today because it's a hardship for us, too. I know you guys are, I know the city is in a recession, so I don't know why they keep giving us a lot of problems for no reason. We want to take care of this matter today.
Mr. O'Farrell?
Harut Sumergian from my staff is going to talk to you on the side and get some details. We will, we'll do a case management for you on this, and so let's hold it on the desk for a couple of weeks and we'll work to resolve this.
Mr. President, two weeks would be June 25.
Thank you. All right, Mr. Speaker, for the record, state your name.
Sarman Banday.
Thank you very much, Sarman. Did you step to the ropes?
Mr. President, did you wish to send that matter without objection, or would you like to vote on it?
No, it was without objection.
Very good, sir.
Okay, Christopher Overton. Christopher here? From Pasadena, California. Note, Christopher Overton. Item 1D, so noted. Carlos Rangel. Carlos? No address. Carlos R-A-N-G-E-L. So noted, Mr. Clerk.
I wish to really address this because people that are not showing up to answer these liens, the city is going to take your house. The city is run by a bunch of thieves, and they will make up liens, they will make up violations, and they will come and leave you homeless. I am trying to protect you from homelessness. So come to City Council and tell these idiots to stop penalizing everybody. We need to live in peace. We don't need all your stupid liens and regulations against the people that are just trying to have a place to live. Who the hell are you to throw all the people out on the street? Who the hell are you to keep all these empty buildings and the people living out on the street? You are a bunch of assholes.
Card would be on J. Raul Torres. Mr. Torres. Mr. Torres. 3224 West Sunset Boulevard. Note the card. Mr. Walsh. Item 1. You're out of time, John, so sit down and relax. Mr. Herman?
There's a request to continue item 1J for 30 days.
Without objection. Mr. Clerk, you got that? Request to, is that all right?
1J was previously continued, sir. It was continued to July 29.
Thank you, Mr. Building and Safety. Mr. Herman, please.
Yes, and this is for the record. This is regarding City 13, item B. This beautiful family here has contested and objected to the illegal liens, and on their behalf, I say cease and de-seize these all illegal liens against the taxpayers, against the public. I request and demand all liens be at a stop due to the problem you're causing and harming innocent people who need their homes, who need their money to pay their bills, to pay their mortgages, and not become homeless. So you've created the problem. Now fix it, because many of you today sit here and you just wave your heads as you saw that some of the people couldn't come up here because they waited so long. They got bored, they left. But you're mistaken. If you have an issue with a lien, please come to City Hall and address it. Mr. John Walsh, a teacher, and I, the House dude, anyone here will help you. Reform the situation you're having. Thank you.
The only other card is for 1B, which Mr. O'Farrell's office is working on. No other cards on this item. So open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote on the balance.
Fourteen ayes.
Next item. All right, we're going to go into closed session. Members of the public? Closed session. Thank you. Mr. City Attorney, on behalf of the people of the State of California and in for the City of Los Angeles, please make your statement.
Counsel will proceed into closed session pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9.
Thank you. So, members of the public, you can exit the chambers, please. And the time, if you'd like, to visit our tower, the Tom Bradley Tower, and/or look at the beautiful columns of the rotunda. Sergeants, please prepare us for executive session.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks, and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year, thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together, we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
And a safe haven like Hollenbeck Palace.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a...
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes One Cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves, but together we can change that.
By sponsoring a child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play...
In a safe haven like Hollenbeck Park.
With One Cup, I can play soccer after school.
With One Cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to Onecup.org and make a difference today.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland, with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together we can change that.
By sponsoring your child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play, and a safe haven like Hollenbeck Park.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here, to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.
The average adult spends more than eight hours in front of the screen each day. Children spend up to four hours. Studies show that sedentary lifestyles put you at risk for disease, even at an early age. But a healthy lifestyle is just a click away. Los Angeles Recreation and Parks provides over 16,000 acres of parkland with parks and lakes, swimming pools, golf courses, skate parks and dog parks, and more than 180 community recreation centers. A healthy lifestyle is just a click away. LAParks.org.
It just takes one cup.
Every year thousands of children in our community drop out of school, they quit on their families, they give up on themselves. But together we can change that.
By sponsoring your child for the cost of one cup of coffee a week, you can provide a child with a mentor, a place to play.
And a safe haven like Hollenbeck Park.
With one cup, I can play soccer after school.
With one cup, it helped me get here to college, preparing for my future.
It just takes a moment to change a child's life. Go to onecup.org and make a difference today.[198.34]
Mr. President, for item 31, in the case entitled Pedro Rios versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $5.5 million in settlement. For item 32, in the case entitled Michael Hunt versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $215,000 in settlement. For item 34, in the case entitled Timothy Bedford versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $500,000 in settlement. And in item 35, in the case entitled Ronald Boone versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to expend $250,000 in settlement.
Thank you, Mr. Clerk. Are we going to vote on those separately or together?
Together, sir.
Together, thank you. All right, so let's open the rolls on those matters. Close the roll. Tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's a request to send those matters forthwith.
Forthwith. All right, next item will be 24.
Item 24 was called special by Councilmember Parks.
Mr. Parks, we do have some public comment cards. Can I do the public... No cards. We did it in committee, so we'll note them. Thank you so much. Mr. Parks, you're on the cue.
Can we have city staff, please?
Followed by Mr. Price.
Good morning. I would just have four or five questions, just more of it clarity, because there was so much confusion about the first round of promised zones. Would I like to find out, we've heard different stories, whether Phase 1 that's currently in place, are those boundaries being considered to be altered or changed in any fashion?
Good afternoon. My name is Claudia Montorrosa from the Housing and Community Investment Department. Are you referring to the current promised zone boundaries? As I understand, currently, no, there isn't, but I would defer to the mayor's office for that question. If there are any plans, but as far as I know, there are no plans to extend the current boundaries.
Okay, so, because we've heard rumors that they were to talk about it could expand and include other areas, so that's not in the workings, as far as you know?
As far as I know, no.
Okay. The other issue is, could you kind of tell us on round two, how the different procedures will differ from around one?
The main differences are that for the proposed guidelines for the promised zone, the three grants that were originally required are not required anymore. So the Burn Criminal Justice Grant, or a Promise Neighborhood Grant, or a Choice Planning Grant, those are not requirements. And in the first application, you had to have at least one of those grants in order to apply, and you had to also be invited to apply from HUD.
If I understand correctly, the organization that won the grant had all three?
Yes, they do have all three.
Okay. And then, is that real money, or is that incentives, like they talk about promised zones, are giving you the ability to apply, as opposed to being real dollars in hand? So are those other grants all real dollars?
Those are real dollars.
Okay, and so, in the future, as we go forward on round two, are those grants just that, their grants that you can apply and get incentives for application?
Right, so the promised zone is a designation given or issued by HUD, and it will give the city or that jurisdiction bonus points for other grants at the federal level, be it from Transportation Department, or other HUD programs, or Health and Human Services Departments, since they are working in conjunction, and they can award, or have a designation within a grant application, that if a jurisdiction is a promised zone, or has a promised zone, then they can get up to the number of points that are awarded in there.
And so, the issue is that the second round, there actually is no real money in any fashion?
So I need to clarify that the promised zone that the city currently has does not have any funding attached to that. It is a designation. YPI had already been a recipient of the prior three grants that do have actual funding.
That's what I'm saying, but on the second round, there is no real dollars attached to an organization or in any fashion?
No, but if there is an organization that already has any sort of grant, or if there's any other kind of money that can be leveraged against, that will boost the application, because there's already some capital within that geography that can be leveraged on, but it's not a requirement. And the promised zone designation does not equal instant or capital dollars.
Okay, my final question is that, what is our best guess? With the first five that went out, we were successful as a city, and now there's hundreds of cities and dozens of states that are going to apply, what's the chances of us getting a second grant when others who consider themselves as needy have not gotten the first one?
It's going to be tough. There will only be a total of 20 designations given nationwide by the year 2016. So HUD expects to award the next five or more promised zones in 2015, but by 2016, there will be a total of 20. So we will be competing against all of those other jurisdictions, and depending on what the final guidelines end up being, then we would have to work within those guidelines.
And who's preparing that paperwork for the city?
I'm sorry?
Who's preparing the paperwork for the city to apply?
At this point, we are just reviewing the comments so that we can better position the city, and include recommendations that will give us a competitive advantage.
But is the housing going to complete the report, or is economic development... Who's going to do the actual application?
The council may wish to ask the Housing Department and the Economic Development Department to come back with some recommendations as to what the application should be, because there are a number, the local governments can apply, nonprofits could apply with the participation of the local government. So how that's going to be done still needs to be determined, and I think it might be in the council's best interest to ask the departments to come back with their recommendations on an application.
Is that one of the recommendations in the CLA's report?
Yes, it is.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Price?
Thank you, Mr. President. There certainly has been a great deal of interest in the promised zone program, the first round. And so, I think it's very timely that HCID and EWDD provide some comments, I thought, some very good comments toward the next round. And so, certainly no guarantee, or no certainty, that Los Angeles will be selected again, but I think we need to, because of the need, there's an opportunity for us to put the best application forward. And I know there are a number of organizations that are already starting to talk about how they can collaborate and work together. Again, I think some very specific comments made by both organizations. I didn't see in here, though, a discussion about a recommendation dealing with the contiguousness of zones, of potential sites. And again, I think that might be an advantage, something we can look at here in L.A. It might be South L.A. and East L.A., or Pacoima and East L.A., you know, but how do we put some language in, at least, to increase the possibilities that there are ways to collaborate in ways that we haven't before?
Councilman Price, Robert Sands, Assistant General Manager, Economic Work Force Development. Councilman, that's a very good recommendation that should be included in here, to look at the most needy areas of the city. And when you look at those most needy areas of the city, they're not contiguous, but they're large pockets within various council offices. And they're close by, but they're not necessarily contiguous. So I think having the recommendation to allow non-contiguous would be a very good recommendation.
Thank you. Well, Mr. President, I would like to amend this report to include a recommendation that the promised zones not be contiguous as a part of the requirement, and that we approve this report as amended.
Thank you. You have a second on that amendment there? Mr. Parks seconded. Thank you very much. Mr. Price moved. Mr. Parks seconded. So, Mr. Clerk, you have that down?
Yes, sir. And for clarification, that's moving, and subsequently amending the CLA report that was submitted last night and has been distributed as now before you.
Correct.
And including the resolution attached to that.
Correct. And I, as the advice of our fine city attorney, I have four cars. You're going to have one-minute comment, please. It would be Dana Nunez. Dana here. Come onto the microphone, please, followed by Cynthia Sanchez. One-minute comment, followed by Dossie Austin. Thank you.
So the comments will be in Spanish, and I will translate for her.
We have a translator here.
Oh, okay.
Start the clock over, Mr. Clerk.
Buenas tardes. Mi nombre es Darian Nunez, y yo soy residente de Boyle Heights por más de 20 años. Y hace cuatro años me involucré en Promesa Boyle Heights.
Excuse me. Good afternoon. My name is Darian Nunez. I'm a resident of Boyle Heights. And several years ago, more than four years ago, I participated...
Nosotros los residentes...
I participated in an initiative for Boyle Heights, Promesa Boyle Heights.
Hemos trabajado con las escuelas y organizaciones para crear una visión común y un plan para nuestros niños.
We, the residents, have worked together with the schools and organizations to create a vision, a common vision and a plan for our children.
Tengan los recursos y apoyos necesarios para tener éxito en la universidad y en sus carreras.
For them to have the resources and the support that they need to have success in universities and in their careers.
Juntos hemos logrado mucho en poco tiempo y sin apoyo de fondos federales.
Together, we have accomplished much in a little bit of time without federal funds.
Como comunidad hemos logrado un incremento de graduaciones en la preparatoria Mendez.
As a community, we've been able to accomplish an increase of graduations in the preparatory Mendez.
Los estudiantes han sido aceptados en los colegios y en las universidades.
Students have been accepted in colleges and in universities.
Y estamos trabajando para crear un centro de salud en la preparatoria Mendez.
And we are also working together to create a health center in the preparatory Mendez.
Pero para hacer nuestros sueños y planes una realidad necesitamos la inversión de fondos del gobierno federal.
But to make our dreams a reality, we need the support and the investment of government funds.
Thank you very much, Ms. Nunez. Thank you. The next speaker, Ms. Sanchez.
Hello. Good morning. My name is Cynthia Sanchez, and I'm the Executive Director of Proyecto Pazoral at Dolores Mission. Proyecto is a community-based organization in Boyle Heights that's focused on developing community with residents around the issues of education, leadership, and service. Proyecto is also the lead organization for Boyle Heights Promise Neighborhood, a collective impact initiative of residents, schools, and organizations that are working to ensure that children and families have the necessary systems and resources to be college and career-ready. I'm here today to urge the city council to support our recommendations to HUD for the second round of promised zone selections. Last year, L.A. received a promised zone designation for one zone, and given the population size and great need, Los Angeles is in a competitive position to advocate for and win additional zones designations. We stand united to bring hope and opportunity to all. So the two recommendations, one is to eliminate the proposed requirement of the contiguous zone, and the second is to propose that they eliminate the requirement of no more than one application.
Thank you very much for that comment. Next is Ms. Austin. State your name, please.
Daisy Avitia. D-Y-C-Y.
Got it. Thank you very much.
So, good afternoon, everyone. My name is Daisy Avitia, and I'm the project director for Promesa Boyle Heights. And Promesa Boyle Heights is a collaborative organization, something really unique. We have about 20 organizations, four schools, and 150 residents that have been committed for five years. First, in developing a very ambitious plan to transform our schools and to transform our community. And then, when we didn't win a promised neighborhood implementation zone, everybody unanimously said, "We're just going to have to get it done." And we've been transforming our community for the last two years, have had great results, and now are positioned to become a promised zone. And we're also echoing the ask that the council support the recommendations to the federal government, that, one, they allow large cities like L.A. to have more than one applications, that they eliminate the requirement for zones to be contiguous. And a local priority for us is to highlight communities that have already developed a plan, already have a structure for collaboration.
Thank you so much. Ms. Ramirez?
Thank you. We hope that you house and educate our military veterans, whether they are uniformed or ununiformed, active or inactive, and also furloughed pilots. This needs to be addressed urgently within the Housing and HUD Promise Designation Center. And lastly, stop unlawfully funding all illegal wetbacks and gangbangers. And there goes the neighborhood. Look at our military veterans and pilots, legal law-abiding middle class. They are ending up homeless, and not enough space to put them in shelters, because they're filled to capacity with wetbacks and gangbangers. This is severely flawed, and we are now demanding that you restore this system to our law-abiding American citizens. And again, we want to restore America. Again, your priorities as council members and as the city is to our United States military veterans and legal law-abiding middle class, because they're ending up on the streets. That's, again, wake-up call.
All right, that completes the public comment. Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Mr. President, you have the matter now before you for a vote.
Plus with Mr. Price's and Mr. Parks' amendment, correct?
Yes, sir.
Good. So, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
11 ayes.
11 ayes. Next item.
Mr. President, that takes council to general public comment.
All right, members, I'm going to call, and members of the public are going to call for one-minute public comment. So please, we would ask Gwendolyn Scott, Ms. Scott. Please, thank you so much. It's a one-minute public comment.
Good morning. Well, it's afternoon now. I started out this morning. My name is Gwendolyn Scott, and I've been residing here in Los Angeles for the last 10 years. I got a chance to meet Veligosa Jam Perry. I work with her so we can get the crack dealers, crackheads, drug dealers, whatever you want to call them, off the streets of downtown Los Angeles in between Spring and Main, Los Angeles. We still haven't cleaned it up, and I'm speaking directly to Mr. Price now, since he's taken over Ms. Jam Perry's position. I will be residing back in Sacramento, California, working on my master's degree in social work. I have been to numerous of the nonprofit agencies and everything, and we need to either shut down Gladys Park or San Julian Park. We need an area for the kids who go to the Los Angeles Union Rescue Mission, because there's kids there. We need a park down on Skid Row where the kids can play at.
Thank you very much. Ms. Ramirez, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you very much. Fire, arrest, and sanction West L.A. Police Department officers with no pension benefits, and they are the following: Sergeant Duke, Jay Abot, like your butt, Lieutenant Canales, the Butt Kisser, Officers Kirkland, Barron, A. Bone, Kay McCarthy, Mark Dorrell, Chris Ragsdale, Detective L. Smith, Detective Kay Thomas, Detective White, and Detective Mastin. Give them the royal boot for criminal negligence and contributory negligence against law-abiding tenants and victims who call the police department for protection safety, but the West L.A. Police Department is non-responsive and arbitrarily denies you equal protection under the law, because they're too busy protecting the white trash junkies, the wetback chonggo gangbangers, and wetbacks who aren't civilized and violent, and the Iranian terrorists and Iranian criminal rings, and African Americans and African pimps and drug dealers, because they believe that they are above the law and entitled to preferential treatment. Again, let's restore America. Let's bring...
Juan Icahala, Juan Icahala.
Everybody needs to protect las güerhas pintadas, que no les gustan los gangbangers and the wetbacks. Es una bola de pendejadas las que dice esta señora. I don't need no translations. She's a stupid idiot. And the other thing is, City Council, Garcetti, promised me lunch at the gay parade, and he didn't deliver, just like he's not delivering with the homeless population. He's trying to hide them in little cubby holes and pretend to the tourists that homelessness does not exist in L.A., but you can smell the piss and the shit all over the streets anyway. So you're not going to hide the homeless, stupid Garcetti, you pretty boy. Go back to your boyfriend at the gay parade. Oh, Garcetti, I'm running for office, you idiot. I'm coming.
John Walsh.
John Walsh blogging at HollywoodHighlands.org. You dropped your half-cent sales tax. We won. It's not going to be on the ballot. Did you see what just happened? Michael Hunt, remember him, the young African-American gentleman? Called a gadfly, thrown out of the meeting for being disruptive. What did he do? Did he complain? No, he went to a lawyer. He got a lawyer, and he went to court, and you just gave him $250,000 damn dollars for being thrown out of this meeting. A lot of sidewalk repairs could have been done with that. And let's look at, I have never seen $5 million. And what was the... And what was that, a settlement? Because of a crazy L.A. cop car. LAPD has cost you in the past year between $15 and $20 million by reckless LAP drivers. $5 million and the punk-ass of reporters in this town are not going to report it. HollywoodHighlands.org.
Brian Barajas.
I turned in a revision since Linda LaRouche was being suppressed by his statement that I turned in yesterday. The four new laws to save the USA now, not an option, an immediate necessity. The other, I turned in the Color Revolution's Imperial Acts of Aggression War, LaRouche, impeach Obama for violations of Constitution and international law. Now, if you want to get into solutions, LaRouche has stated very clearly that, number one, you go with Glass-Steagall; number two, you go to a national banking system; number three, you go to a federal credit system; the fourth would be a crash program of Fusion. Now, the Color Revolution, which is pissing off basically all the foundations of what our World War II veterans have fought for, the U.N. law state and international law state, under these directions of Obama, he has to be impeached for violating all of that.
Mr. Herman.
The present acceleration of fraud and abuse has become a crisis. The war on corruption in Los Angeles has not failed to cease. Friday, 06/06/2014, in Van Nuys, Rick Nightingale and Liliana I. Batman brought you your stickers because our council would rather pay on lawsuits and give away the taxpayers' money. Stitches get stitches. Mariachi, Mr. Rodriguez, because Mr. Weezer failed to show up? Yes, people are urinating because you, Mr. Weezer, failed to provide the public with urinals and a place to defecate. I will use the terminology of a professional. HollywoodHighland.org, go and see and read for yourselves that, L.A., you are disgusting and disruptive. Here's your stickers, Liliana, from Van Nuys.
All right, that completes public comment today. Mr. Sergeant, would you help everybody? Mr. Clerk, what's before us?
Council has motions for posting and referral.
So ordered.
The desk is clear.
And the announcements, members. Mr. Wesson, President.
Thank you, Mr. President and members. I have to announce, because my wife is somewhere watching this, that I am so excited to announce that today is my 33rd wedding anniversary. I can go home now.
You can go home now, but I just want to congratulate your wife for putting up with you for 33 years. That's very special, special. Let's give the Wesson the big hand again.
Thank you.
Any other announcements, Mr. Bonin?
If Mrs. Wesson is watching at home, she really must love you.
Any other announcements, members? Mr. B- Bumanfield.
Today, especially for anybody listening who's in the San Fernando Valley, General Manager of the DWP, Marcy Edwards, is going to be coming to the valley to meet with constituents in a town hall meeting. It's going to take place at 6:00 P.M. at Canoga Park High School. There's plenty of room and we encourage everyone in the valley or throughout the city to come. To her great credit, she's coming and speaking to people directly.
And that's where the bell in Calabasas Creek comes together, Los Angeles River, right there.
That is, yes.
You planted perfectly, Mr. Bumanfield. Any other announcements? Adjourned motions? All rise for adjourned motions.
Thank you, Mr. President. I have two San Pedro legends that we lost this week. I'd like to adjourn in their memories. First one is John Ogle, passed away peacefully surrounded by his family, June 5th. He's preceded in death by his parents, Alonso and Dorothea, Ogle and sister Mary Ludwig. John is survived by his wife Luis, daughters Michelle, Jean and grandchildren Max, Jimmy, John, cousins Bob White and many nieces and nephews. He attended Mary Starr Elementary School, St. Anthony's High School, Whittier College and USC. John Ogle worked for the L.A. Unified School District for 35 years, teaching and becoming an administrator at Dana and Fleming Middle Schools. He played college basketball, was very active with the YMCA. He attended Trojan football games, home and away, for 50 years and enjoyed 20 years of retirement, traveling with his wife Luis all over the world. He fought cancer for two and a half years with courage and dignity. Rosary viewing will take place Friday, 7:00 P.M. at Holy Trinity. Funeral mass is at 10:00 A.M. Saturday, also at Holy Trinity. May John Ogle rest in peace. And secondly, colleagues, I'd like to adjourn in memory of a dear friend, Bob Trusella. It's with great sadness that I ask that we adjourn in memory of our great friend, Bob Trusella, who worked and operated some of the most successful four or five-star restaurants in the harbor area. He passed away unexpectedly late last week. He was 57 years old. Bob Trusella was born in Dayton, Ohio, on April 8th, 1957, and grew up in Scottsdale, Arizona. He attended ASU and Flagstaff University, studying pre-med in architecture and later joined the Merchant Marines. He was a lifelong restaurateur. Bob served as a maître d' at Medea Restaurant and worked at Advanti in San Pedro. He also managed the Sky Room in Madison and La Opera in Long Beach. In 2009, Bob and his wife Josephine opened Trusella's Southern Italian and California Cuisine. Most recently, he opened Otto Trattoria in the former Papadakis Taverna space in downtown San Pedro. Quick with a smile, very generous with his time, his money and his food, Bob was beloved fixture in the San Pedro community. He gave till it hurt to charities, local events and fundraisers, and was always a big supporter of the men and women of the LAPD. To Bob, the people that came into his restaurant were more than customers, they were like his extended family. And he went that extra mile to ensure that, whatever they were, local regulars or coming to dine as far away as New York, they felt welcome. Bob was an early supporter of mine when I first sought public office and I can't thank him enough for his kind words, his friendship and his goodwill for our community. He'd truly be missed. In fact, the family asked that I be at the funeral and give the eulogy on Friday. Bob survived by his wife Josephine, four sons Bobby, Louis, Tony and Dominic, and his daughter Isabella. Services will be held Friday at 9:00 A.M. at Green Hills. Bob, we're going to love you, we miss you. May Bob Trusella rest in peace. Thank you.
Mr. Bumanfield.
Thank you. I want to adjourn in the memory of Herb Hirsch, who passed away late Friday, June 6th. I'd known Herb for over five years. He was a wonderful man. He's one of the first new constituents I met when I was elected to the Assembly in '08. In fact, he was the first person to show up at that first district office open house that I did. He was a tireless and relentless supporter for the fight against Alzheimer's. He opened my eyes to the ravages of the disease, which reinforced my belief that we must do everything we can to stop Alzheimer's in its tracks. He was a longtime board member, fundraiser. He traveled to Washington, to Sacramento, raising political awareness for the Alzheimer's Association for many, many years. And for him, it was also a personal issue. I remember meeting his beloved wife Kay, whom he doted on. She suffered severely from Alzheimer's, was living, and I met her when he had me tour one of the senior living facilities that's in my district where she was, she had been living. She was afflicted with Alzheimer's and it was, I was able to meet her maybe a couple of weeks before she passed. Herb was an inspiring man, calm and polite in his conversation, truly showed respect for those around him. He was a loving father, grandfather, a caring friend. He leaves behind his son Jeffrey Hirsch, Jeffrey's wife Kim, an adored grandson Zachary, and his nephews Kevin and Brian. He was predeceased by his brother Richard and his parents, Paulie and Mel Hirsch. Funeral service will be today at 12:30 at Mount Sinai Cemetery in Hollywood Hills in lieu of flowers. True to form, he's asking that people donate to the, his family's asking that they donate to the Alzheimer's Association, the L.A. chapter. Miss Herb deeply. Every time we spoke, I felt comfortable. I knew I was speaking with someone who really cared about the well-being of others. May he rest in peace.
Mr. Parks.
I'd like to ask that we adjourn in memory of Levett Henry Powell, born October 1931, passed away June 5th, 2014. He was one of six children born to Alex and Fanny Powell and Alexandria, Louisiana. He attended public school in Alexandria and graduated from Peabody High School in 1948. He was baptized at the Oakland Baptist Church in Alexandria, Louisiana at an early age. Later in life, he converted to Catholicism in 1957 and was a member of the St. Albert the Great Catholic Church, where he served as an usher for many years. Levett served his country in the United States Army for a term of one year, 11 months, where he received an honorable discharge. Following his release from the military, he relocated to Los Angeles. He then obtained employment with the Los Angeles County Department of Building and Safety, Building Services, which later became the Internal Services Department. There he remained a faithful employee for 39 years. As a young man, he married Alfreda Griksby. In that union, he had two children, Daryl and Audrey. Union lasted approximately five years. Levett was a hard-working family man, worked two jobs to ensure that he was able to care for his family. Aside from his regular job, he worked in building maintenance and as a security guard. In 1971, he met and married his former Gloria Edwards. They remained together until he passed away. Levett is survived by his wife Gloria, his son Daryl, who is a city employee with the city clerk's office, his daughter Audrey and a host of family members. His memorial service is pending.
Ms. O'Farrell.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Colleagues, we lost a national hero one week ago, Mr. Chester Nez. Chester was born January 23rd, 1921, in Chichiltah, New Mexico. Chester Nez was an original member of the Navajo Code Talkers during World War II. Little history is that 400 to 500 Native Americans in the Marine Corps, whose primary objective was the transmission of secret tactical messages, were formed originally in World War I and carried into World War II. The original two tribes that carried out these code, this code work in World War I were from Oklahoma. They were the Choctaws and the Cherokees. In Mr. Nez's case, during a time in Navajo history, when kids were shipped out to boarding school and forbidden to speak their native tongue, Chester was a part of the brave men who stepped forward to protect our country with their ability to speak Navajo. Navajo was, by World War II, the only remaining unintelligible native tongue to anyone outside the reservation. That's why these 29 men were so valuable in the service of our country. Nez was a member of the U.S. Marine Corps' 382nd Platoon. The original 29 were the first Navajo Code Talkers to serve, and they developed the code that would bewilder the Japanese in World War II. Another interesting fact that I think is worth mentioning is that in the Battle of Iwo Jima, Major Howard Connor, the 5th Marine Division Signal Officer, who had six Navajo Code Talkers, that worked around the clock during the first two days of the battle, he goes on to say that, "Were it not for the Navajos, the Marines would never have taken Iwo Jima." Now, Mr. Nez fought in Guam, the Battle of Palio and the Battle of Bougainville during World War II. He was honorably discharged from the Marine Corps in 1945. In 2011, Nez wrote about his experience with co-author Judith Avila in the book Code Talker, the first and only memoir by one of the original Navajo Code Talkers of World War II. Flags across the Navajo Nation have been flown at half-staff in honor of the last surviving member, and that was Mr. Nez of the original 25 Code Talkers. Chester Nez passed away at the age of 93, peacefully in his sleep on June 4th, as I mentioned last week, in Albuquerque, New Mexico. We send his family and friends our deepest sympathy and condolences. May he rest in peace.
Thank you very much. Members, I ask we adjourn in memory of Dr. Richard Mason, longtime family patriarch, Los Feliz area boarder, Los Angeles, grew up, went to our Motherhood Council School, was a great man, much love. He was preceded in his death by his wife Rita, and they loved Griffith Park and hiked the trails many, many times. He survived with their six children and grandchildren. Also, members, I thought it'd be important that we send a condolences to the city of Las Vegas for police officers Igor Solow and Alwyn Beck, as well as the bystander Joseph Wilcox, who tragically murdered in that horrible crime. And as well, we send our messages of love to Canada, where three Mounties in New Brunswick, the second-largest city in the eastern portion of Canada, Douglas James Larky, Fabrice George Govanaw and David Joseph Ross, all Mounties who were gunned down tragically in violence. The City of Angels stands for all people and we remember him on this day. Before we adjourn, Mr. Sadia.
Housing Committee will be moved to 1:30.
Housing Committee, 1:30. Go serve the city well, be safe.